Good evening. It is Monday, July 15, 2024, and this is a meeting of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. We recognize a quorum of the Licensing Board tonight. Our first item of business is approval of the regular meeting Licensing Board minutes from July 1, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first action item tonight is the Class A Liquor Combo and Cigarette Agent Change for Quick Trip 1058.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, La Mexicana Class B Beer Renewal License for 2024-2025. I will motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, Town Play Suites Class C Wine License for 2024-2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next one is a recommendation to deny an application for an operator's license. I'll entertain a motion to put it on the floor.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Chief, we'll turn it over to you.
Sure, just some brief statements and opportunity for questioning. You know, we never take this lightly to deny a citizen a chance for employment. I do want to remind the committee, though, that granting a application for an operator's license would put the applicant, Ms. Banky, in a position of responsibility regarding customers purchasing alcoholic beverages, control of the employing licensed premise, and the conduct of people within that establishment. Furthermore, an operator's license allows the holder to serve alcohol at any establishment. It's not specific to the establishment that she is currently employed by or wants to be employed by. So when we review these, we look for those exact things. Is there a track record of police contacts, negative police contacts, convictions that would give us pause to believe that they would have the ability to maintain control and enforce the laws and work cooperatively with the Police Department? As I just shared with you not that long ago, we've got a great relationship with our licensed premise establishments and want to maintain that. And we do that by working cooperatively with them, but also making sure they know we have expectations. So instead of always feel terrible dragging people's past through the month, so I'll just summarize the three that I'm mainly concerned about are her possessions and convictions that involve very serious drug use, methamphetamine, cocaine, fentanyl, and paraphernalia. Just for me, I have a personal issue with if they're on probation. One of their rules in probation is not to be on premises that are solely responsible for serving, like such as taverns and bars. Granted, Dooley's does have a component that involves service of food, but I believe it certainly qualifies as a bar. So we reached out to her probation agent. They're well aware that she's working there. They've given her permission to apply. Kind of goes against my grain with if they're going to have rules, they should enforce them. But the agent is aware, and you should know that, and they're supporting her application. However, based on those convictions, I would ask that you consider denying the application.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief? We have a motion on the floor to deny with a second. Any more comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Our next item is Club 140 Amusement Arcade License.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our last one is Club 140 Amusement Devices. I will make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. No more business before the Licensing Board. I will adjourn.
Finance Committee has called the order.
Sorry. The Finance Committee has called the order. We have two items on this evening's agenda. The first is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on July 1. First, can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions, clarifications, additions, deletions? There being none, I'll call that to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The second item on our agenda is a resolution accepting a donation from Milwaukee Tool. Welcome back, Chief.
Thank you. I should have just stayed up here. Look, get my steps in. We are a wellness organization. Several months ago, we were involved in a tactical setup in the city that reached into the nighttime hours, and we realized that our old lighting systems that the PD has purchased through capital budget years ago, probably when Alderman Burquist was still on the force, was no longer adequate, and we needed to look at some other options. The fire brothers and sisters in the fire department helped us out by bringing some of their lighting, which we saw was Milwaukee Tool, started some conversations with one of our members' spouses that's employed at Milwaukee Tool, and from there it really blossomed. Hopefully, you saw the very positive media attention that we got from the donation and we're very thankful for it. So on June 28, the West Bend Police Department received a donation of equipment from Milwaukee Tool totaling $8,000. The majority of it is our lighting and battery systems. We have four great systems now in place that we will no longer have lighting issues. It's lifetime equipment, so we're very happy with that. They also donated a tremendous amount of, it's called Pack Out. It's their kind of like toolboxes on steroids used for everything. So we have a hodgepodge of storage equipment for our drone equipment, for our crime scene equipment. Now, it's going to be very well organized. Take out the confusion when the officers need their tools. We'll know exactly where their tools are. Our team is really taking a pretty neat, aggressive approach to make sure that we don't just throw things together having it stored in the right places, having it done right. So extremely, extremely grateful, to the point of a bit of embarrassment with Milwaukee Tool and their donation to the Police Department. Couldn't be happier. As I said, when we met with Milwaukee Tool, it really just goes along with that continued private-public partnership that we've been experiencing from the Riverwalk, the downtown, the Planters, now continuing on through this. So there is no action needed since it was a property donation, so we don't need any money into an account, just maybe action to accept the donation, I guess. But more importantly, just wanted to get in front of you, hand the citizens, and make sure they know how generous Milwaukee Tool was to support the city and our mission to protect and serve.
Thank you very much for that, Chief, and thank you, Milwaukee Tool, for continuing to be a great community partner with the City of West Bend and our various departments. Can I entertain a motion to accept this donation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Burquist and Alderwoman Sizer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There being no further business before the Finance Committee. I adjourn as Chair.
All right. It is still Monday, July 15, 2024, and I will call to order a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin State statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has been.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a full quorum of our Common Council here present with us tonight. Our first item of business is approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 1, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our consent agenda items are listed in your packet, items 2 through 8.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments? Alderman Allen.
I have a question for the Chief on the motion to deny. So do we want to pull that out separately?
We certainly can, unless you want to ask your question and maybe see after that.
That would be fine, because it's largely informational.
Okay, why don't you ask the question, and we'll see.
Yeah. Chief, are licenses fungible beyond our boundaries? In other words, if someone gets a license to serve alcoholic beverages in West Bend, can they go work in Kwascom or Jackson or?
Not under our license. Our license is within the municipality only.
Okay, so it's only fungible within our corporate boundary?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That was the question.
Are we okay keeping that item in the motion? Okay?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second on the approval of the consent agenda. Any other comments, questions, discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is an approval of an airport ground lease, which was listed in your packet. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Sparts. Is there anything to go through on this, Jay, to tell the council?
Yeah, I can share with you that this is a replacement lease for a lease that we had in place for a long time, 20 years, on the tower. It is a significant increase in revenue for the city, which is pretty awesome. The previous lease was expiring. The last payment that we received was $30,900. The implementation of this new lease from 8/1/2023 until July of this year was $80,000. So we negotiated a significantly higher lease moving forward, and they will continue to pay us on an $80,000 basis until the conclusion of the first five-year period, and then we typically see a 10% or so escalator on top of that lease. So it's good news for the city. This is a special revenue fund for us, for the airport, and will really go a long ways for that budget in maintaining equipment and running the airport. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Alderman Butchlick.
Jay, this brings us, brings those up to where everyone else is paying the same thing, correct? As far as, it's not a big jump just for just that one. It was bringing them up to the normal what we charge.
Yeah, that's a fair question, Alderman Butchlick. We have negotiated one other significant increased lease. We're at $98,000. That one started at $80,000 a few years ago. I'm in the process of negotiating one more at a large amount. Industry standard is way lower than that. We've been aggressive with our lease negotiations and have been successful to date. To say that it's bringing them up to where they all are, that's not quite, we're not quite there yet, because we're in the middle of a lot of those leases that are in the $30,000 or so, that maybe started back in the day at $12,000 a year, and had an escalator that got us up to $30,000. It's something that I feel passionately about for the city and work hard to get what I think we have coming for us. So it would be the second, and hopefully in a month or two, we're back before you approving a third lease at a significant increase for, that one would be for water utility.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jay was, Jay led the negotiations, Jay did 100% of the negotiations on that project, and at certain points, I got a few unhappy phone calls, but he stuck to it and really came out with a heck of an agreement. So thank you for all your hard work on that. Our next is a discussion item on additional funding for road and alley improvements. This was an item requested on our agenda tonight by Alderman Allen. So Alderman Allen, I guess I'll turn it over to you to start with. We also have in front of us the 2050 Transportation Sustainability Plan that was put together in 2022 between the county of Washington County and the City of West Bend, so we can certainly refer to that. But Alderman Allen, I certainly appreciate you kicking us off.
Yeah, I asked for this. I don't know if, I suspect I get most of the complaints about the condition of the alleys, largely because most of the alleys are in my district. There are a spattering of alleys in John's district, John Sparts' district, but the bulk of the alleys unfortunately are in my district, and most of them are in pretty poor shape. One of the things I found recently was while we have a Transportation Sustainability Plan here that talks about dealing with the maintenance of roads over time, it doesn't address the condition of the alleys. And they are part of our transportation plant that we do need to maintain. We have alleys that are all but non-passable to anything other than a high clearance 4x4. Garbage trucks can make it through too, but they have pretty much, they go pretty much anywhere. And then the other thing is, I had asked Jay about the status of additional borrowing authority. In other words, we've talked briefly about borrowing more money for road construction, and I'll let Jay report on that. He talked to Ellers, and we may want to get more aggressive on the number of projects we begin to pursue in terms of roads and come up with some plan for addressing the alleys. During one of the recent Free Coffee Friday sessions, the Public Works Director, Doug Newman, was the speaker, and during the Q and A, the first question that came was, what are you going to do about this alley over here? And they pointed at the alley right behind where Doug was standing. And when high rains or heavy snowmelt occurs, you see the aggregate from the alley washing down into the street directly in front of the library. And that's not even the worst alley we have. It's just the worst one immediately across the street from the library. Right now, I don't believe there's any plan to do any maintenance on alleys, and I believe the alley directly behind my house was the last alley that had any work done by the city, and we were trying to figure out exactly when that was. It was probably about eight years ago. So since then, I don't think we've done other than, you know, driving down and throwing a couple of shovels, a cold patch in the alleys. So Jay, would you talk about borrowing and?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit, and then I, if the council is interested in hearing from Max, I've asked him to attend today, and he's prepared to share his experience here with alleys, and he does have some data on the condition of our alleys. They're not part of the Pacer report at this time, but he's maintained their condition or lack thereof, as you've pointed out over time, and can speak to the last time and maybe how we've been able to upgrade alleys in the past. I did have a chance to communicate with Ellers regarding the possibility of adding additional borrowing to the city's annual borrowing, specifically tied to roads, as there's been some talk about that at the council, and the reality is there is room to do that within our current levy limits, and it's something that we can discuss in earnest for as soon as 2025, and adding that to the capital borrowing and pack out more roads. We certainly have road need. You've heard me say that often. I've heard some of you say that often to your constituents and to others that have asked about a specific road, and when is my road going to get fixed, and then why is it not on the CIP, five-year CIP yet? And I mean, that's, the honest answer is we're doing as much as we can with the resources that we have, and that we have a lot of road need, not counting alley. We certainly have a lot of alley need within the city as well. But I guess with that, I think hearing from Max would be, Mayor and Alderman, if that would be appropriate, I think that would be helpful for your discussion tonight.
Sure.
Jay, I saw you raise your hand. Oh, sorry, Alderman Sparts.
I was kind of going to go along the same lines, and I think Max will probably answer it. Not having talked to anybody on this, but the first thing I've got, question I've got is, where are the alleys? I mean, we know the districts. What alleys do we have? What conditions are they in? Is there a rating system on them? Do we have something, should we set up something that's similar to the road program, which, okay, everybody's probably, people may say, well, that ain't so great anyways, because we can't get anything done. But you're right, it's resources. But we need to identify what we have and what it's going to cost. And that's, I think, really one of the first steps in my mind. So that's kind of where I was going on that, but I think that's going to get answered as we talk here.
Yep. I will weigh in too, just as Max, because coming up, that this is an expense that could be specially assessed to the adjacent property owners as well. So it is very much in the definition of a local impact. This isn't a major arterial road or even, you know, like one of the, you know, 8th Avenue or Walnut or some of those that are servicing more than just the neighborhood. They are very a local impact.
Thanks, Ian. Max?
Thank you. So we do have data on the alleys within the City of West Bend. We have about 56 alleys, accounting for about five miles in length. The alleys are not eligible to enter into the Whistler database from DOT, because they are not considered highways in the DOT definition. So we do not have actual Pacer rating of those alleys, but we're working with Conco Engineering Group, our consultant, to actually go out and get a Pacer rating of those alleys. When the county established the 2050 Sustainability Plan, the goal was to include a couple alleys a year into contracts, what we had done in the past, because we found out that doing contracts to just do alleys led to high prices on those contracts, because, you know, it's a small area, it's, there's a lot of constraint with the paver, and what we did in the past is when we had resurfacing projects, we would, on a large road, we would include a couple alleys to that project in order to bring the cost of these alleys down. We have not included alleys. We had mostly reconstruction projects in the past few years. So yes, we're very interested in coming up with a plan. Somebody suggested similar to the road plan, if we have additional funding in order to address these alleys, and so we can come up with cost estimates and then figure out how many alleys we can do a year and then run a cycle that way. Any questions on alleys?
Max, when you say 56 alleys, those are what? A block of alley is one of those 50? I mean, how many? Is that 56 blocks of alleys?
Yes. We accounted for them mostly by single blocks. So yes, some alleys might run several blocks, but each section that we have are from road to road, and then we did not account for an alley crossing like multiple roads. So those are the sections in the block. Yes, that's correct.
Max, when you consider an alley project, I mean, there is an infrastructure and stuff like we would have with a roadway, you know, where we replace sewer and water and all that in the same project. Would that, I guess, lead us to believe that alleyways are less expensive then? Because again, it could just be a paving or a replace milling and replacing of asphalt rather than like a total reconstruction project?
So these alleys do not have sanitary sewer and water main, but several of them have storm sewer and probably older storm sewers, so it's deteriorating. We may have to replace some of those structures, some of those pipes. The foundation of those alleys is in bad shape. We would have to go beyond just pulverizing and repaving. We probably have to address rebuilding the foundation so the pavement can, so the life of the pavement can be extended. So we would have to study each alley case by case. Some of them might be simpler by others, those that do not have storm sewer. We have to deal with drainage. There are different aprons from garages coming. We have to match those grades, make sure that we're not creating puddles, that the water can drain from one end to the other, things like that. So it looks like it might be a simpler project than a road reconstruction, but in the end, with all these factors, the cost might actually per lineal foot, obviously, be similar or maybe a little more.
Okay, so when someone says, well, it's just an alley, there is more to it, correct?
Yes, and like I said before, that's the reason why at some point we were bidding a road resurfacing project, and then we were including a couple alleys, because we knew that the contractors would want this project, this wood project, but not really want the alleys. And so we kind of forced them to do the alleys at a lower price, because they were fighting to get the bigger contract.
Some of these estimates are in the Appendix A in the back, and, you know, the least expensive one I can find quickly here is $183,000, and that's for .03 miles of roadway. And the most expensive one I can find quickly is $725,000, and that's for .13 miles of roadway. Most of them are somewhere in the $400,000 to $500,000 range, and I don't see 50-some in here, and so I'm assuming these are maybe, maybe longer blocks, although .03 miles is certainly not, not very far. Anyway, my point is that there are some estimates from 2022 in the back of this document in front of you. Open discussion again here tonight, as Jay and team are starting to work on the budget for next year and needs and in the community. Of course, fixing roads is certainly a high priority, but we do get emails on our alleyways. We, I had a resident recently ask the question, can I just pay for it? And, you know, maybe he knows that they're $400,000, maybe he doesn't. Maybe he's talked to his neighbors and they've decided, or, you know, hey, just assess us for it. We'll pay for it. I don't know the answer to that gentleman's point, but that was thrown out. I think the main point being is these folks are frustrated. They use the alleyways to get to garages and take out their trash and things like that, and they are without a doubt in poor shape. So I think that was kind of the reason why you wanted this discussion tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. One of the things that, you know, when the City of West Bend was laying out how they were going to grow and so on, they made decisions to service certain areas with alleys. And the further you get from the older part of the city, the less likely you are to find an alley, like not at all. There are some alleys up by Fair Park, and there's alleys directly across from downtown in the area between, bounded by Washington and Indiana. And then there are alleys in District 2, and that's it. So District 2, District 5, and District 1, or 8, or 6, have the alleys. John's got two blocks up in Fair Park, but, you know, the alleys are in pretty gruesome shape, because we stopped maintaining them. You know, there wasn't any ongoing maintenance. They, they're not a, you know, they don't have curbs and gutters, and for the most part, the drainage they've got is whatever gravity provides. I was surprised to hear that we have some that have storm sewers in them, so, you know, and they're also not the width of a road. They're one lane of traffic, if that, and they're, again, a rural, they don't, they don't have anything on the edge. It's just, you know, runs into the dirt. So they're, you know, they don't really fit the numbers in Appendix So they're, they're, you know, they don't, they don't really fit the numbers in appendix A. These are all cases we're dealing with a, a urban contour, so.
Alderman, which look, did you have?
Yeah, just Doug's not here, but I might as well throw it out there. Would Doug's crew be available to do some of the ones where there is no storm sewer, but some of the shorter alleys were, it's starting to deteriorate and they could just basically do the road surface, the block top surface and that and take some of those, if there are some alleys out there that are in really sad shape, would his crew be able to take care of that? I've seen some of their patchwork on the streets and they're doing some very nice work they're doing.
Yes, I, I don't want to speak for Doug either.
I know.
But I will say this, on those alleys that are worse, the, the issue we have is that if, if you address just the surface, you're going to be back the following year or two years later because it's not going to sustain, it's not going to hold. The foundation being bad, you, you really need to dig into that, replace the foundation and once you have something solid, put the, the pavement on it. So that might be a little higher task for, for Doug's crew. If it was just the paving, I would agree with you. Unfortunately, in our case, I think we, we would need to go out and beat those.
Okay.
What would be the likelihood that, that a, a unique and innovative solution like, you know, rubbleize the road and, and grade it and then put traffic bond, which is, it's a aggregate and stone dust and, and some cement, it basically hardens on its own? Would something like that handle? I mean, these are mostly not high traffic areas. It's taken decades. I've talked to people that said, it's been this way for 25 years. So, you know, in some cases, the alleys were in pretty rough shape when I moved into town and, you know, they haven't gotten any better.
So with, with a solution like this, we would have to look at the structural strength of, of the final product, obviously. Like you said, it's probably not heavy traffic in the terms of number of vehicles per day. However, which you mentioned earlier, the garbage trucks are there every week and those are heavy. And so we need to take all this into account. We will definitely look into this suggestion and we'll let you know whether it's viable or not.
I would just make a statement that I'm in favor of, of, you know, upping, upping our borrowing for roads. You know, whether it goes to roads or alleys, I think we need to come up with something for alleys, what, you know, whatever that looks like, we should start making that plan. But I guess one might, one last question for Max is, is if we had another million dollars a year, do you have between, you know, your staff and Concorde, can we support that additional load of projects? Or are we, you know, are we at a point where we have to hire more people or what does that look like?
I would say that Concorde Engineering Group is always willing to take on more work. And we have found sometimes when we had very busy years and we knew that maybe we were pushing them to the edge of their limits, we would go out, get an RFP and then get a different consultant to do design and contract administration for us. This year, we have Kapor and Associates running three roadway construction projects for us. So regardless between the resources that we have currently under contract with Concorde or other resources available, we would be able to take on additional work for those alleys.
Do you have any idea what that upper limit would be? Is it one million more or two million more?
I do not have the number you're asking. To do all of the alleys, that, that would take?
No, I'm, I'm talking about doing more roads too. I mean, you know, yes, we need to do alleys.
Yes.
We need to do something. We can't, we can't just do nothing at this point. They're, they're that bad.
Yes. We, we do know that there are needs in the city of West Bend for, for roads and alleys. I will say that any amount of money that's added to the budget would be welcome.
Yeah, another way to answer your question is, there is no upper end of the limit based on the needs we have of our roads in the city of West Bend. It comes down to a matter of how much are we willing to increase revenues through multiple sources to be able to tackle that problem? One of them, particularly with alleys, could be assessments. One of them would be increase in property taxes. We can also continue to look for outside sources, various grants, similar to what we have gotten coming our way in a couple of years for Paradise Drive. Those types of, all those types of fundings are things that we need to look at as additional sources that we can put against the roads and infrastructure in the city, which to your point, needs to include alleys as well.
Max, I, I don't do this very often, but I saw, I'm going to refer to a social media post as it relates to Paradise where a commenter said, you know, geez, why does it take a year to plan for a resurfacing of Paradise? Can't you just run a paver, write down it and, and do it tomorrow? Can you maybe talk a little bit about, about the planning and the process that will go into the Paradise project?
Yes, thank you. This, this project is receiving funds from the federal government through DOT program called the Surface Transportation Urban, STPU. And in order to receive this funding, we have to follow the, the process that, that goes through this program. Usually it's four, five years where you apply for the funding, you receive the funding and then you have to go through the design phase. A lot of times in between, after the design phase, there would be a land acquisition phase when we need to acquire right away. In the case of Paradise Drive, we do not have to. And then the construction. So that, that entire process usually takes four, five years. Sometimes it's four years, sometimes it can be up to six years. And the reason for that also is that the DOT is managing projects throughout the state and they have all these projects and if they have a four to six years cycle, they like to, they like to apply the same amount of funding roughly to each year. So they move projects depending on the complexity of the project or where the project is at as far as design phase, land acquisition, construction, and they move construction projects to the first year, second year, third year. And so they get to decide when the construction is going to happen, actually. So we don't have much. So. I think it's a good deal, but again, we have to jump through the, through the hoops.
Great. And, and Jay, you and I have talked about Paradise a little bit. This, this federal grant, it, it had to be, it had to meet certain criteria. So there were, there were some questions like, well, why did they pick Paradise? Can you maybe explain why Paradise was, was fit within the criteria versus, you know, you name it, street that may be in worse condition?
I could attempt it, but Max can do it.
Okay.
Thank you. So in order to receive this, the funding from this program, the road has to meet a certain functional classification. So DOT classifies the roads as local, arterial connectors. And so the road has to be either a minor arterial or higher in order to receive the funding. And for Paradise Drive, in fact, it was, it was a project that we started when in 2022, the government came up with the bill funding where suddenly they had a big amount of money that was brought in and they were looking for roads where you don't have to do full reconstruction because they wanted to expedite the projects. They wanted to skip the land acquisition process, process. They wanted to minimize curb and gutter. They wanted to do just pavement and this was a perfect candidate for that. We applied this project to receive the funding. We did not receive the funding. We received funding at that time for Rusko Drive and Water Street. And so that project got pushed back to the next cycle and then, so we still kept the application in the system. And now we're under the 2024, 2029 cycle. And then, so we kept our, our application alive by reapplying, reapplying, and then we finally got this, this funding. But those are the main reasons why this project was selected.
Thank you very much for that. And to Alderman Sternick's point, we're constantly trying to find funds from, you know, all over the place and I think this is a, a great win for the city and, and not everybody at home always realizes the criteria that's, that's put around the type of funding and, and the application process. And it's not just, you know, here's a million bucks, go use it wherever you want. It has to be in this case, a, you know, a major thoroughfare or however you describe it. So thank you very much for, for that explanation. I think it's important. Any other discussion?
I'm glad I finally have my hands on this. It would take me some time, a little bit more time to absorb this and understand it better.
Good. That document's, I think, still very alive and well, even though it's a couple of years old now. Jay, any, any direction you're looking for from us as it relates to preparing for the budget or that, that process?
Yeah, we're going to be creating the budget very soon and coming forward with the operating budget and the CIP, the capital improvement budget. I guess some level of, and we don't have an action item tonight, but some level of consensus would be helpful to move forward with additional spending or, or not on roads. Obviously it'll be helpful for Matt, Max as well from a which roads do we prioritize and, and recommend? We don't just recommend spending an, an additional million. If you don't know, we currently are spending 2 million on roads and when this would be an additional million of up to 3 million. So it's not just a blanket 3 million, it's tied to specific road costs. So I know you, you know that if you've been on the council for some time, that Max and his team have pretty serious estimating skills and, and come forward with, with what these roads are likely to cost and then we, we match that up with the $3 million, but, or, or whatever the number is.
And so as we go through like the budget calendar and things, are you able to show us, here's where, if we continued at the same rate of borrowing, here are the projects, the roads that we would be able to complete, but if we added this road and this road, it would, it would equate to X borrowing more? Is that easy to do?
I mean, it's easy to do if Max creates the road estimate for each one. So it puts a lot of work on engineering. And, and I don't know, more so than easy to do or asking engineering to do work without the funds, I would, I would never do that. Remember what, what the county, when they shared this transportation plan with us in 2022, what, when the question was asked, we're currently, we shared with them what we're currently borrowing, 2 million. What, what should we be borrowing to come up with this plan? And the answer was 12 million annually. We're not going to get there. That, that's a number that's likely unattainable, but something in addition to the two would, would certainly move the needle and, and would be recognizable for our constituents within the city. I, I think that's been true the last few years with the addition of the 3.3 million in ARPA money that we've used all of our ARPA money allowance for roads. And Max mentioned the grant money from the bill. We, we apply for monies when we think we have a match and we were really aggressive with, with that and we're successful with, with several roads. We apply for some that we don't get as well. We applied for a federal connecting communities grant for Main Street and we did not receive that. So we, we, we win some and we lose some, but I, I think that's starting to be recognized. I'm just stressed to the council that the addition of the million would, would be helpful and viewed as positive from staff and, and your constituents.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Yeah, would it, would a greater investment by the council, would that, how would that be viewed by people looking at grants? Would they say, oh, well, they obviously are interested in, in doing good things and, it shows because they're, they're borrowing or does it hurt us? And, and they look at it and they say, well, they can afford roads, so we'll go elsewhere.
That the, the criteria used to, to select projects are from, because we're working with programs from the DOT, from the DOT standpoint, they, they look at the project merit on its own. Of course, I'm sure they also look at what's happening around in the city, but the main weight of, of the projects, they, they look at the merit of the project on its own, if it meets their criteria. They have those check boxes and whether it's number of crashes, the condition of the road, we have to write a narrative every time with providing all this information and trying to fit into those boxes that they need to check in order to, to award the project. So there might be a little bit of what you're describing, but mainly the project has to stand on its own.
Any more discussion?
I, I would say that at least from my standpoint, I would be very positive about a increase in borrowing to, you know, to basically do another 50% of what we're doing for roads.
I will add one more thing if I may. So we started a conversation with Doug Newman, our director of public works, and Concorde Engineering Group, our municipal engineer firm. And we're looking for roads where we could actually do resurfacing, pulverizing, repave, which those projects then would be helpful to include alleys as well. So we started looking at this, we're, Doug is doing an inventory, we're going to look at those roads, try to put some cost estimates together. If we do receive additional funding, we'll definitely be ready to make some suggestions on some roads and include some alleys to, to get that work done.
Any other thoughts?
I would just echo Alderman Allen's remarks that any additional borrowing we can do to help fund, and I look at it as not funding, but investing in our roads in West Bend is going to be a positive for this community. That being said, to your point, Jay, I don't think we can reach a $12 million increase to get to that level. While we would be able to take care of many of the roads with that kind of funding, that would be ideal. That's also a burden that falls upon us as taxpayers in the city of West Bend. So I think as, as we look at it from a, you know, a fiscally responsible standpoint and, and be wise in the way that we are investing those dollars in the roads that we resurface to, to maximize Max, pardon the pun, but to maximize what we can do and accomplish through pulverizing and, and repaving versus, or in addition to those projects that require full infrastructure work, I think is something that would be positive for the city. work, I think is something that would be positive for the city.
I agree with those comments, Alderman Sternig, you know, our need list is so long in roads, and it's, I don't want anyone to think that we're just, let's give you an extra million bucks and let's see what you do with it. The need list is there, I'm sure you have roads and projects where you can spend that money very wisely, get, you know, I don't want to say biggest bang for your buck, but also, we want it to be noticeable, and we want to, if our community is willing to invest, they want to see the results of it and see a difference, and so using our needs, you know, the assessment of our roads, and maybe moving projects up with some additional funding, and essentially moving all projects up by a year or two, the need is there, I guess, is my point, and I think, I know the money would be very, very well spent, investing in roads and trying to make a noticeable difference.
How would that affect taxation?
It would go up. A million dollars on our current debt levy schedule would raise the debt levy percentage probably 12.12, so we currently have right around 90 cents, it might go to a dollar, a dollar or two if we raised in average 350,000-dollar house, which is about the average of our house, I haven't asked Jeff lately, but that'd be around 50 bucks annually. So it would have a tax impact. I'm glad you asked that question, Alderman, but that's something to discuss openly as well, and in full transparency with our constituents, that the addition of a million dollars to our road spending budget, which would no doubt be noticeable in knockout roads, to get done and reconstructed sooner, it would have a tax impact.
Jay, I guess I want to go back to a question I asked 20 minutes ago. Is that math easy to show us, that if it's a 350,000-home, million bucks, 50 bucks a year? Can you or Ellers show us that when the budget comes around? That this is what, this is what, an additional million bucks? That was, sorry if I didn't ask that clearly last time, but.
I didn't catch it before.
But that's, I guess, what I'm looking at, is what is the impact that we can discuss? And if it's, if we think of 50 dollars a year on a 350, you know, or maybe it's 100, or maybe it's 25, I don't know. So as you prepare the budget, is that easy to do, to show us?
Yes.
Okay.
This is just, you know, aside, but I, after one of our council sessions where we dealt with, you know, this is how much the taxes went up, and I happened to be downtown in one of our fine establishments, and had engaged in a conversation with three or four of the people that were pulled up at the bar, and we basically spent as much on drinks bitching about how much their taxes went up as their taxes were going to go up. Because the one decision they wanted to talk about was, I can't remember what it was, it was something we decided as a council was important, and we did it, and the bottom line is, we all dropped about 25 bucks on the bar in terms of drinks, and that was more than the impact of that decision. So it, I mean, they're big dollars, I don't take them lightly, you know, but by the same token, the way you get things done is through taxation, you know, this, we don't wave a wand and say, you know, make this happen, and things that we decide on have an impact. But one of the ways we get things done is we pool that impact, and so, you know, my share of X project is relatively small, but a lot of people making that contribution, that adds up, so.
Good comment.
Are there areas where we can reduce expense as part of that? Can we look at that?
Sure. So is your question within the road area?
No, I mean, just generally, across the board.
That's certainly a fair question. The council has the ability to make decisions regarding the budget in all areas. It's not likely to be.